Okay, we'll all rise and we're gonna let Brother Wyatt give our invocation.
Dear my Father, we call upon your precious and holy name this morning because we realize, O Lord, that you love for us is done in and empty. Lord, Father God, we just pray, O Lord, that you continue to watch over us and guide us throughout our meeting. Lord, we want to thank you for the elected officials and we pray, O Lord, that you just give us desire and the drive to do the right things for this county. And we pray, O Lord, that you help us to make the right decisions so that this county can prosper and go forward. Lord, we realize that all things are in your hands. And that's why we call upon you this morning. We want to thank you, O Lord, for watching over us through the storm recently. And we want to thank you, O Lord, for keeping us safe from the coronavirus and all the things that you're doing for us, O Lord. We just realize that it's you. And we want to thank you, Father God. We pray that you continue to watch over us and our families and our offspring and all our loved ones. And as we go forward, we pray, O Lord, that we do the things that will be pleasing in your sight and will glorify your name. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Morning, everyone. This is Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, ten fifteen a.m. And I do call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum here and acknowledge any guests present today. And the first item is consent of the agenda. And if y'all look over that and if you hadn't already, then ask for approval.
Make the motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Motion been made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Pombi that we accept the consent agenda. There's no discussion. So all in favor? Five oh. Okay, the second is to deliberate and consider action on the following items. And we're deleting the number one item because it was approved back on July the thirteenth, twenty twenty, through the commissioner court already. Number two is to discuss an appropriate approved Newton County opt out participating in the deferment of the social security tax. Ms. Ginger.
Okay. The president issued payroll tax withholding social security taxes back in August. What that is, I did a whole lot of research on it. And it's withholding their support of their social security tax from September to December of this year. But I'm recommending that we don't do that because then we'll have to be responsible for collecting those taxes come January one through March. And after March, or maybe May, if those taxes aren't paid back, then we'll the county will be responsible and we'll have penalty and interest to pay back with that. So I'm requesting that we opt out. And I checked with our surrounding counties and everything, and nobody is doing it.
So we're gonna continue on the way we're doing it now?
Yes. We just need this formal thing in case something comes up that we all opted out to do this.
I make it, Ma.
Thank you.
Andrew, you want to try the line, ma?
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. Fuller that we opt out of participating in the deferment of the social security tax. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number three, to discuss an appropriate approved updated Newton County employee handbook and CDL drug and alcohol testing policy and procedures. Ms. Ginger.
Gary, I can't quite stand back. Couple of months ago, we had a little workshop on the handbook. And I made another copy today of the changes that were made. And I just changed, like I told you all, the nepotism charts. And then y'all have the old page that was on the, in the old handbook and the new one is what I upgraded. And I moved, tell you on the front, I removed the page numbers, new nepotism charts, updated the nursing mother's breaks, removed forty hour holes, I revised a little statement about the time sheet, and I revised about compensation that left out the temporary employees, which I had to add them. Payroll deductions, that's just on our personnel and different insurance. They used to have to submit changes to us or they wouldn't. Employees would get, they canceled and they wouldn't let us know in time. And so I just revised that. And then calculation of pay, I removed the forty hour hold on that. And then the general thing, I just revised it. And then we changed the compensation, emergency closing. This is where the judge had asked me to change this before they were getting paid double time. And we changed it back to time and a half. And then about the county insurance, there's been some that does not participate in the county insurance. But it's not an option. Either you take it or you don't. You're not gonna get reimbursed because you're not taking it. Because that's not a part of your salary. That's a benefit. And any type of benefit that the county offers can be taken away. So I checked into that and the judge, we looked at that and got that, we changed that, if y'all approve it. And then also the judge and a couple of other ones came to me about the comp time for the sheriff's office. And the Department of Labor, you can, they can make up to four hundred and eighty hours before they have to be paid out. But I know a lot of times it puts a hard burden on your budget when you have two or three leads at one time. They've got a bunch of comp time built up that it wipes out your budget, you know, because it makes it bad on the sheriff's budget. So we did some checking on that and I saw the HR lady attacked. And the Department of Labor, they get paid up to four hundred and eighty hours. But the judge had suggested that we move it down to two forty. And then in, that makes it, everybody else's comp time is at two forty, can accrue more than two forty. And then everybody's holiday pay is a hundred and sixty hours. So, but what that's gonna mean is we're gonna have to pay some of those deputies down to get them to that two hundred and forty. And I'm the auditor. Got some, I don't know if it's very much that we'll have to pay, I think we three hours and seventy seven dollars. To get them down. But if those guys were all to quit at one time, and we're gonna be having a new sheriff come in January one. So that was a concern of the judge. They didn't know how many people were, what was gonna take place. So it's either pay them down or leave it light, let them build it up. But you, commissioner's court can set how many hours that they can approve up to. Department of Labor, they let them accrue up to four hundred and eighty before they have to be paid out. Because you don't want to be such a big amount to have to pay out. So that's the only other change that came about since we had the workshop. So it's up to y'all.
Did I read you know where the employee and man are going to fill out their own time sheet?
The employees are supposed to be filling out their own time sheet and turning them into their format. However, y'all wanna do that, that's up to you. If you want to leave them in the office and let them fill them out, y'all work that part out. But they're supposed to be filling out their own anyway because we've had some trouble with that in the past. I'm just trying to stay ahead of everything.
Even though we, we make them out, they sign. They have to verify that the time's right.
Everybody, you know, they really need to fill them out. Except if you want them to come in, y'all work that out because we've had trouble in the past with the department heads filling them out. But it's, you know, not all of us have trouble, but there's been trouble in the past with different things. So I just have to place it out in the general, all y'all with it.
Well, they can accrue two hundred and forty hours is what's recommended now. And then they get paid out and start over.
Pardon?
Right now, they're four hundred.
Like if they were to quit.
Yeah, we're trying to change it.
Two hundred and forty and they would have to say, they'll come and go over.
Every time.
Two forty, you would have to pay it out.
That county wire, now. County wire at two forty.
Yes. And two, what else with the comp time at, the sheriff's office at the end of each year, I'm assuming we're still gonna do that? They get paid out eighty hours? And that always depends on budget. In December, they got paid out eighty hours, up to eighty hours if the budget was permitted then to get that paid out. So like if it come December and they've got two hundred and eighty hours, they can get paid eighty hours of that in December.
Why don't you dollar them out every year?
Do what?
Why don't you just dollar them out every year? I mean, why are we doing this?
That's up to y'all. It'd really be a whole lot easier.
It'd make sense to me to dollar them out at a particular year or over zero.
I'm with you.
It would make it a whole lot easier on.
I'm telling you, it's not something carrying on. I mean, it's just me. I'm just one boy.
And that way you don't have it rolling over every time when somebody quits. You gotta have them out though.
Yeah, that's the biggest disparity. You owe it to them anyway.
Yes, yes. I'm not hitting any of that, but.
I say dollar it out. That's just me.
Uh, she hold it.
So do we want to, like Sharon already talked about, she's got just that rough number right now to get, to get them down to that. What we can do is, she can do is Richie's and lift everybody out, lift their average arms and see what we're at right now. So y'all can see how much money we're paying out, post payout if we zeroed out and went forward. So, and then we would get some sheriffs and.
Because that's including the jailers and dispatchers too.
Yeah.
That's all the law.
Well, I mean, you said everybody, I'm saying everybody.
You're gonna have to hold down.
The whole county.
I'm talking about the whole county. What's good, I mean, why, why are you, why are you making?
That is regular. Regular people aren't budgeted to pay out that sheriff's office. But I mean, we could look at it as the end of the year. So you all got how much over, how much comp time out there on the books?
The rest of the county, pretty much, the other offices, they take the time off. It's put on the books and they take it off. There's very few people that have built up comp time.
The sheriff's office, the way their schedule is on, they work on the holidays, they.
And we don't? I'm just saying.
The way that we, like if Christie worked on that holiday, she, I'd give her another day off compensate for that day.
That's what we do if they, if you work over, you know, if they go on the books for a little while, but then you take company pay off to you, you know.
They don't work like that amount.
But it's kinda hard when it's so fast.
It doesn't work like that.
But we have some that pay out the comp time, but it's.
I mean, we just can't, we just can't choose to take that day off.
We, we talked about emergency work and that's, that's what takes, I think is where.
Now, in the emergency part, that's a totally, that falls in a whole nother category. They'll get paid out there overtime. But just everyday normal working, if they work over, all the offices except for certain commissioners, they, goes on the book. Because y'all aren't budgeted to pay out that. Now, if you start budgeting, yeah, that'd be easier for me, way easier for me, if we paid out comp time. But it has to be a budgeted item to do. But we're gonna run out of money somewhere. And a lot of people, I mean, I know there's folks want time off, some want the money. But most of the people want it to go on the books so they can have, especially for their first year if they're.
I don't, I don't have an employee that wants any comp time. Not one.
Well, when you're saying comp time, when they make, when they get overtime.
That's right.
If it's put on the books, that's called comp time. And they can use it at another time.
That's right. And I'm telling you.
We've never had any, they've never confronted us because they took it.
And I'm telling you, I don't have an employee that wants comp time.
Well.
See, and I'm, I'm not, I have some, I've had some, had pretty major surgery and never lost.
Yeah, and that work falls into a good place when they have major surgery.
And that's, that's the reason they, they want comp time.
Because it goes on the books, you know. Yeah, because if they go, have to have a surgery and go on F M L A, their job's only guaranteed for twelve weeks that they might not have. And if they accrued hours, but to have forty hours and they may be out the whole twelve weeks, well, they're gonna be without pay.
I'm, I'm not sure in handbook what it says about comp time, what constitutes comp time? Is it over the normal hours? Is it emergency hour?
Anything over forty hours.
Is that explained in, in the handbook? Is it, so then that becomes policy, right?
Do I?
If we sign off on it, then. I'm just saying, I don't have any employees that won't comp time. No one. And I'm different in real, I'm different in gene.
My guys, yeah, my guys, they have maximum vacations, so they don't really need comp time. You know, they.
But if they don't make, you know, that's fine.
They just take vacation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I've got.
As long as, as long as they're not making any overtime, we don't have to worry about comp time. So when they go to making that overtime, you know.
Well, see, that's something we don't know when we're gonna have overtime. We could have overtime this afternoon. You know.
And if it's occasionally, that's fine. I'm just looking at it money wise. We're gonna run out of money.
And I can go and tell you right now, over the next twelve months, you're gonna be a bunch of us. So just as soon as you go home, we're setting into wintertime. We got all these lead entries, we got everything right now.
Well, put it in your budget overtime page.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just explaining it to you there.
Well, I mean, I understand if they do that. And I understand the comp time and all that. But from my side, you're gonna have to have that money budgeted in your budget to pay that comp time.
We're, we're just like the sheriff's department. We can't pick and choose when we go out.
Sheriff's department is a whole nother bar.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just liking them. You need to put me in the same boat with them because I'm just liking. When the phone, when the phone rings.
He's got it busted in here.
We get up and go.
He's got it busted in here.
I mean, we just work fourteen days. We didn't have any choice.
Say, a lot of the comp time that I'm having right now is, for probably, I can't say in seconds, for the last four, five months, I'm too often staying. And for the last twenty-four days, as a matter of fact, I figured it up this morning, twenty-four days, I'm having too often at the hospital, some little hospital watching an inmate, and then a twelve-hour kill. And I thought I had the comp time before, now I'm really, really struggling now with something.
What it says in the handbook.
My dad's not black. It's just me, right? It's gonna happen to do office.
It says in the handbook that it's like, um, non law enforcement.
The lighting is really bad, it's right here. So y'all just going to take two. And it's just one, it's making supervisors look bad and it can't be told by.
Man, bro.
But it's actually out of our hand, you know, it's just.
Um, it says in the handbook that non law enforcement employees will be paid their overtime if it's permitted in their budget. Otherwise, it goes on the book. So if you budget it for overtime, which we've been paying your shot anyway, we'll be expecting. And I don't know, because I'm, some of the time, they would have to tell me if they wanted them to pay it out. You know, because normally it goes on the book. But I don't have a problem with paying it out as long as there's money.
So when they pay overtime, it don't come out of the general fund? It comes out of their general fund?
No, their general fund. Comes out of the commissioner's general fund.
Comes out of office.
Well, I see that out of the Roden Bridge.
Yeah, out of Roden Bridge's general fund. So it's not coming out.
And we're, and we're really not budgeting it.
No, the sheriff's office is budgeted for right comp time. Yes.
I'm just saying that over the next twelve, fourteen months, our overtime is gonna be bigger. It's just past history.
Right. And you have, I'm, I'm just the money lady. I'm not the budget lady.
No, we're not. I mean, this is a conversation. I mean, I'm just saying that what my problems are.
And I'd love for y'all to put money.
And I just don't think it's just, I don't think it's, it's fair to just keep rolling it over and rolling it over and roll it sooner or later. You're gonna have to pay it anyway. It makes no, at the end of the day, you're still paying it. Might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, it might not be next week, but that, you're paying it. So why in the world not catch it up if we got the funds to catch it up? And therefore, you won't be in that problem anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd have to be governed real strictly by you commissioners because it's coming out of y'all's general fund, not, not my general fund or the county's general fund.
Remotely, it's coming out of that fund.
Well, yeah, because when you run low, Liz is gonna give y'all another, but that, and that's fine. But I, I, there's just gotta be some kind of control on, you know, just cause the fellow needs another hour and a half at the end of the day. Y'all do you really?
We don't do that.
And I'm, I'm not saying you do.
Now, if the salary stuff starts running low, we couldn't pay out a bunch of overtime. We're gonna have to come and report for budgeting that is salary, but it's big.
Well, that's right, time out.
Well, that's theirs, that's theirs. Right there. He pays all his out, mine has comp time. He runs out the money and we give him another fifty thousand dollars to do his payroll. If you do that, every precinct's got to get fifty thousand dollars.
Well, you need to get the money that's coming to your precincts.
Well, one of them, since you give it, you run out of money and they give you fifty thousand dollars? I didn't run out of money, but if you get fifty thousand dollars, I would be able to get fifty thousand dollars also.
Yeah.
And you need to know, I see it, it doesn't work.
And if there's money in there to do it, that's, that's gonna cut you short on road material that you use having Rosenbridge or, or something else that you've got in line out of Mother's House.
So.
If you gotta go to your general fund to, to get the money to pay you overtime, it's not coming out of the county general fund, it's coming out of your general fund.
That's right.
So therefore, you're gonna, you're gonna lose it in material, you're gonna lose it somewhere.
You're gonna lose it somewhere.
So, these two hundred and forty hours that we're talking about for the law enforcement, are we gonna let them leave, go up to a hundred, to the two hundred and forty? Or you just don't want that at all, or you're just gonna pay them out?
Well, we're talking about.
They're gonna have to accrue, they're gonna ha, there's not gonna be any way for them not to accrue each month.
Let me ask a question. So, so they're accruing all this time, so that means we don't have enough people, right? So you're paying premium instead of paying regular time. Sooner or later, we gotta be smart enough to say we need three more guys and pay them an hourly wage and not be paying premium. Well, I'm just saying, it's still just adding up, something ain't adding up. The, the math don't add up, either we're short of people or we're abusing the system.
Well, first of all, we're short of people.
Okay.
And second of all, there's so much band- mandated training that we have to do. Uh, my guys, they got comp time, um, vacation time, they got holidays, they gotta pay, and to maintain twenty-four seven, and I'll tell you this. I'm gonna say ninety-nine, ninety-five percent of time, and since I've been here, we maintain twenty-four seven coverage times two. Got the north end and the south end, twenty-four seven, ninety-five percent, we have two people out, twenty-four seven.
Well, doesn't it make sense to pay hourly wage instead of premium wage?
I'm so, I'm sorry.
I said, don't it make sense to pay hourly wage versus premium wages?
And he can't hire the people, though, I guess.
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I, I mean, hire two or three more people and you're still money ahead, right?
Well, here's, here's what, here's what the problem is. Of course, y'all heard this before, this is not new. Uh, keeping people, uh, I've got two opens for the last three or four months and don't even have an application. I don't have an application to fill the two spots that I've got. And that goes from the people can go to work in Orange, they can go to work in all these other, Orange pays fifteen dollars an hour more than my guys. And, and what, what I, I lose people, they're leaving, once we get them trained and where else, where they can go make a living. And, and, and of course, that's been an ongoing deal. Bill, when you were first elected Commissioner up here, that was a problem then, and it's still a problem. And, and to be honest with you, Newton will never, probably in my lifetime, be able to play what Orange Sheriff's Office plays. I mean, that's just reality, we don't have the tax base and, and that's just, uh, something that we've got.
It's the same way as motorrad operators, that's saying Gene can't get anybody.
Accrued hours, is that paid out time and a half or straight time?
Well, I'm just saying, add some people.
Time and a half.
That's what we would do in real business, instead of paying overtime, overtime.
Well, yeah, that's, that's.
We're paying a premium time because.
Well, I see, he says he knows he hasn't got an application.
Time and a half, we, we paying time and a half instead of straight time. If he, if you was working.
I'll do the math.
Okay.
Per capital. We're getting just as much as that. Per capital, you know, oh.
Well, I, I don't, I don't.
The situation is better, though.
He had two people more than what he needed, he's still gonna have comp time.
How many people, that you can govern?
Sheriff's Department's always gonna have comp time, I don't care if he has fifty people, he's gonna have some comp time. Because when you have a murder or you have something made to happen, everybody in the world shows up.
I just need to know.
We can't, we can't, same way with motorrad operators, Gene can't get a motorrad operator, because they can go down to Orange or wherever and make forty dollars an hour, construction job, make fifty, sixty dollars an hour.
I just need to know if you want them to accrue up to the two forty or not.
Two forty.
And then pay them out, or pay them out, we need to.
Zero out at the end of the year.
Well, if you know how the money's zeroing out.
Well, you, 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 you've got the time, you owe them, so, I mean.
That was the question that began. Uh, if everybody quit at the same time, it would rupture the budget.
Right.
So, that's the reason we tried to find some kind of guidelines to follow. Now, I, I don't have a problem with paying them out at the end of the year, but we've got to have the money to pay them out with.
Well, keep that comp time down, because you're paying a time and a half. How many people would you have to hire to keep that down instead of paying premium dollars? Apparently, a whole bunch.
I'm gonna say, like the tough guy, I, I'm gonna say a couple people. One of them, I'm gonna say probably two, uh, what, what kills us is, is the routine patrol officer. And I'm gonna take Julie Bill for example. We had the standoff down there twenty-four days ago. If I'd have had a C I D guy that does nothing but cr- criminal investigation, not routine patrol, criminal investigation. He could have saved, I don't know how many hours of Scott, Kathy, my deputy down there, that's having to do all the investigation stuff on this standoff shooting and all that that we had down there. And that has put, I don't know how many hours of comp time on him, because we had got to get all the warrants done, we've got to get all the statements from everybody involved, and it took him a life. We have a C I D guy, the routine patrol guy would do an initial statement, and then the C I D would take it and he would do nothing but that. He wouldn't have to go answer, dog barking and loud music and husband and wife having a problem exchanging kids and, and all of that. He could stay doing the best criminal investigation, you get that over and it's moving past about a lot of comp time and all that. But, oh God, he's still having to maintain all the market dogs and the husband fighting and, and all that, and still dues a, so he's coming out on his day off, because we got to have that, the warrant done, that type of thing. See, I see, they, they one in the north and one in the south, and that would be, I've got enough patrol people, I think, to deal with it. So somebody's got to tend to the investigation department. And about the time the deputy gets involved in the investigation, so and so in his life are having a knockdown drag out and somewhere else he has to leave what he's doing and go down and tend to that. I would say two people, uh, C I D in the north and in the south, I'd like to secure ninety percent of their comp time. I'd like to make the recommendation that we, since we don't have the money to pay everybody out at this time, we have not budgeted for it, lower the hours to two hundred and forty hours max. And we already talked about paying the ones that have accumulated above that, get them down to two forty. And next year, budget for, uh, paying out if we want to go that route, but we don't have the money to pay out at this time, right?
Uh, yes. But also, there are also Sheriff's Department law fees with dispatches now, and that's due to, to then work for holidays. You have to have somebody with that, so you're gonna have your with that with the servants have to work, I don't know, go in four hundred and eighty hours, build up what she works during her holiday. So, I mean, that's gonna be another issue too, that's, I mean, you can hire, you're also gonna have people on streets during holidays, you're also paying holidays.
But the maximum accrue of holiday hours is a hundred and sixty. That slipped through the cracks some way.
Yeah, somehow it slipped through and.
Over the years.
Somehow we had it on there for the week, so.
So, a hundred and sixty's the maximum anybody can get for holiday hours. So that's gonna cut down on a lot of that.
Well, what, what, they can't work and not get paid?
Right, they'll get, they still get paid for it, you know.
But right out on the book, so we're gonna have to eventually pay these people, however you justify, we've got to pay this out, so that may be for, maybe for another.
And we can see, I mean, if we try it like this, this year, do it for six months or this year, for, you know, from here, starting this year. If it don't work out good, it's still not right, we can bring it back and we can do, update it again. We can update this, it must mean, you know, I don't want to do it every other month, but I mean, once a year, we need to go through it and see what's working and what's not anyway. And then we could upgrade it then.
Well, it shouldn't be a problem for the commissioners, if they want every six months to look at their comp time, pay it out every six months.
And it usually.
And they'll take it off, and you take it off, you pay them every six months.
Cool, and when you pay out that overtime, you can, that goes into that, but you have to look if you're gonna hire somebody and that, to see how much money you have left in that position.
I make a motion that we table this, uh, and have a in-depth workshop and number, uh, in, in the next week or so. So we can move forward with, with this, uh, one item.
Can we approve that, can you approve it? And just leave this one out and approve everything else?
No, we're gonna do it all at one time.
If it's a hurricane, we're gonna be paying it overtime again.
I said, in the next week or so.
Okay.
Well, we've already looked at it.
Did I motion that?
I made that a motion. We, we got that.
Motion's made the second, we table item number three, is in discussion, all in favor? I vote.
Judge, so are you gonna, all the commissioners gonna come to the workshop?
Yes.
Number four, is discussing appropriate request the county to consider authorization for Goodman, Lester, Strong to commence bid on Newton County E D A improvement project, uh, County Route Forty-One Twenty-Three. Mr. Oakes, would you like to present that?
We, uh, we have completed the growing, so, uh, it's called Sand Pit Road. Uh, just to kind of remind everybody, that is a project that's funded by Economic Development Administration, uh, through that college administrator. Uh, it involves a reconstruction of Sand Pit Road from Highway Twelve North, approximately seventy-three hundred feet. Uh, and the project generally entails stabilizing the subgrains, reshaping the road, uh, adding coverage where needed, uh, and then putting down, uh, new pavement along that length. Uh, the budget on that project is about one point eight million for destruction, and we're coming to y'all this morning to get an authorization to advertise for bid.
Is that road gonna be elevated?
Yes, the, the road, uh, what we did was, we, we operated with the, the general, now you gotta remember, that's a seater, uh, and it's been exceeded a couple of times in the last five years. Uh, but generally speaking, the road on average is being elevated another foot and a half. Uh, one of the problems with that road, for those of you who haven't been down it, uh, the road itself kinda acts like a conduit to carry water that gets past the sand pit. And, uh, and what we're doing is, we're gonna leave the old levee there, and we'll be going through the levee with new storm grain to get to the side side of the road. To get into the normal path that runs across the, uh, uh, but yes, it's being elevated, uh, uh, with predominantly, it's gonna have a face and asphalt. Uh, the areas where you've got heavy truck movements returning in and out are gonna be concrete.
That was one point four?
One point eight.
That's what I thought you said.
And, uh, if we're authorized to proceed, we're planning on setting the building for October eighth, here's four hours to be, that's a Thursday. Which will be the Thursday before your October, uh, May fourth.
And also, uh, if they not enlighten, I just, this is a hundred, hundred percent grant, there's no money, uh, cost for the county.
That's right, hundred percent grant.
Is your motion?
Hold on a minute.
That's okay.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson, second of Mr. White, that we, uh, authorized to, uh, go out for, advertise for bid. And, uh, on the E D A improvement project, C, uh, C R Forty-One Twenty-Three, any discussion? I would like to say that Mr. Thompson and I met with Pat and, uh, and, uh, what was his name for? Nick. And, uh, and then Deb Cog is also administrating this, this grant. So we all met last Friday, Thursday, and we made some changes to the, to the plans, and so, uh, I think Mr. Thompson and I are fully in agreement with it. So, any others discussion? Not all in favor? I vote. Number five, is discussing appropriate to consider the Forty-Three Oh Eight Annual Contract between Harris Government and, uh, Newton County I T Support Service, Mr. Shannon?
And this children y'all agenda there, um, this was, uh, Ms. Melissa, uh, which was this far into Harris Government, um, about their I T support server, um, agreement. And, um, for four thousand three hundred and eight dollars a year, they would maintain support monitors, that server, that database and that equipment. Um, I, I'm on the fence with it, um, I do all the patent and everything to it on a monthly basis as it is. Um, what they're saying is that it needs more attention and monitoring on a twenty-four seven basis. They have the tools and equipment to do that, if there's an error in the hard drive, they're on it immediately, um, taking action on it before they lose data. We don't have those tools available, I'll say that, it would cost us way more than four thousand a year just to get those tools. What they do is they buy these monitors, the equipment and everything, and then they piece it, you know, out to each one of their clients, so they don't get the bulk of those kinds of costs. So that's all added in here. Um, they're saying that it, you know, the database itself with all the records, needs some funding to them and things like that. I'm not a database expert, I do a bunch of different things, but I'm not gonna dig into their information and all of those things. So when it comes down to that, not sure, I think it would be probably appropriate for Ms. Melissa to say what she needs there and go from there. It's her data, county data. Uh, I didn't bring it up, you know, but this is what I was handed, and.
This came out as a result of Hurricane Laura, and Harris Government made me aware of this. It was really tough to bring the server back up. Well, we got it up, but it wasn't correct, our data wasn't correct. They went ahead and worked on it, took care of everything, got it back up to speed, but they said the next time they would not do it free of charge. But this was a service, it's on the back side, um, they would, should they be more than happy to speak with the auditor, with our I C, and they talked with Shannon. But they said it's something that Shannon cannot do, it's on the back.
but they said it's something that Shannon cannot do, it's on the back side. I found out, I thought we had one server, they're saying we have three. There's internal servers within the server, which...
And back of the server that we don't receive?
We don't receive and cannot reach. We did everything, uh, that we could do correctly, but it was... It was the job getting everything back.
So how, how did these people come into the picture? If we, if we've never had this contract with them before?
They are somewhere, you're right. Well, when we first got with Harris, we first became customers of Harris Government, our, it was kind of the trim, trim down, let's flint, let's trim everything we can and get what... But no, we've never had this, and we don't have to have it now. But they're just, they've just told me, and I asked about it with Shannon, so he could speak with them, because I'm not an IT expert, I don't know if someone's giving me a, you know, line of bull.
And I don't, I don't think it's, but Harris Government, they're...
That's our backside software.
They're definitely... They're separate from our net data.
Yeah.
Have they always been taking care of the problem? Or have we had a problem?
Well, we've never had this problem since. We've been on Harris Government, we haven't had a hurricane like this.
And we've, we, that's already, uh, come before, we, that's...
Oh, yeah.
So that just kinda keeps up with everyday...
It's the bare minimum on that kind of stuff. I think we have to...
Well, you don't have any idea what we pay?
Oh, that's twenty-one thousand a year.
No, it's just gonna be an addition.
It's gonna be an addition too.
And I'm not saying we have to... It's just...
So i- if we didn't have an annual contract with them?
We have an annual contract, but it's specific to certain things already.
With her?
This is not on the contract. Right, right, it's an, it's an additional service. And the way Roger described it to me, he said, there's a hole on the back side that y'all are not protected, and that hole needs to be covered. That's the way it was described to me. But y'all are welcome, you know.
So, so with this, this annual contract, then that will protect us?
Protect us. What we went through after Laura trying to get things back, what, we were, we were on the wrong date. They had to go in and, we were, um, some computers, computers wouldn't bring up the PAC software, which is Harris Government. It was a mess, it was a mess.
So you're saying that this internal work is going on behind the scenes here with, with a server within a server within a server?
Right.
That you can't touch with your ability of education?
Not necessarily education, but permissions too.
Permission, well...
On access to their accounts and all of the, the services that they have that they're putting into that server. You know, they have the licenses and everything, I don't have permissions to get in on. And it's just probably the same thing with net data. I don't know what their contracts look like, and we can look into that, um, 'cause I'm curious now. But we've never had an issue with net data, I'm pretty sure their IT services is combined into their contract somehow. They take care of their own, because it's their database, it's their software. Some of the same with hers, but it's a whole different situation with all the county, um, information in there that they're saying is unprotected on one end. Um, and we definitely don't wanna lose that, so that's where I am concerned.
That, that's what concerned me when we got net data, and it, but it don't cover all the bases.
Yes.
Or the hidden, or the hidden factor here.
Later on, I, you know, you might need it, but...
We got that I B M server down there in the past, I think that may be the same thing. When we have that annual maintenance factor, we're gonna need a year or two. I think that may be kind of the same thing.
Right.
Who says, they cover that server?
Right.
All of that stuff that goes with it.
We had that same problem, was because we were on that data, was after Hurricane Rita. And that's when that, this ser- a service like this was added in that day, net data, whatever, contract. Remember, it was, it was tough, we went thirty days without being able to collect, and I think you went, you had to go to another county to do payroll, or whatever, yeah, it was...
So then six months later, we got another hidden server in there we don't know about, or...
So this is totally different, I'm talking about, the same thing, this same similar situation happened with Hurricane Rita on that data, and that's when there, they got a better contract. You really don't know a problem until after it happens, but you have problems.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly the reason we having this discussion, is to try to figure out what is the problem and, and to divert the next problem.
Absolutely.
Because we got, we got things to do also, just like you do.
Oh, yeah.
So let's, let's try to find out what the problem is, and, uh, correct it as we go.
Yes.
Uh, and not wait till it happen and say, well, we didn't have that. I'm, even though, I guess Harris, Harris didn't charge us for this?
No, sorry.
So...
I was, I was trying to say, I didn't know, I wasn't aware, I was just making this correlation of Rita. I didn't, we didn't know.
Um, I'll also point out a couple other things. Um, they're, they're adding in, um, services for PCs and users, um, in that office. And it's an additional support where, I think what happened the other day, I wasn't directly available, working on other projects, running for the county. She needed her PAC server open and running right away. Well, they're there to support that, if I'm not available or whatever. Um, right now, we're not paying for that service, so it's, on one hand, it's helping me out because I'm not there, unless we're okay with PAC being shut down for possibly six hours or so, till I, you know, clear up that project, you know, I could be working for you, Miss Palmville, whoever, on some important stuff as well, y'all understand what I mean, right? So it allows them to get in there, fix her problem, and not be shut down for the PAC office. So, is that important? Can she wait? That'd be awesome.
But can they assure us that the loop is completely closed, once they, sound like they found a hole, a, that was, a spot that was not covered, protected? Uh, they, they are a monitoring and, and, uh, support system, right?
Yes.
And so they...
Monitoring there is gonna be monitoring for hardware too. A couple of years ago, we had a few hard drive failures on that system. Um, we didn't know about it until they went out, you know, the lights start blinking on it and see things aren't running right, well, they'll be monitoring it with those tools I explained earlier, where if it starts glitching, they know about it, they already, they're shipping, uh, new hard drives and a technician to come out and replace it right away before it fails, and before you lose data. Um, those tools might cost us twenty thousand dollars a year just to monitor that kind of server.
Anybody got any more questions?
I'm confused.
If we don't have a contract with them, we need a contract that says they'll maintain or repair any problem that, that arises. There may be something else that happens, they don't realize it's gonna happen. I, I, of course, I don't know what that would cost, but, uh...
I don't weigh the wrong people.
Uh, if I may go over record today, all I'm going on is what they told me, because of a problem. I personally, after this discussion, I was ready at the table, and let's find out some more information about this. Where, where is the hole, what is the hole? You know, I don't know, I'm not an IT...
In the meeting.
You know, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay, alright.
Well, make that motion, we table it.
Thank you.
Motion been made by Mr. White, and second by Mr. Fuller, that we table, uh, item number five. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? I vote. Number six, discussion appropriate to approve the, uh, contract between AT&amp;T, Newton County, at the offices at hand, for all, uh, county offices. Mr. Shannon?
I'm a little out now. Y'all confusing. I, I'm, uh, I'm gonna share it here with AT&amp;T, but I made these visual aids that might just draw a picture a little bit. Is that confusing too? The, the blue there show that we're paying current rates for our phone systems, and then the red will be what we'll have, um, with the office at hand, with AT&amp;T.
I'm gonna give y'all a look at that together, excuse me, Shannon.
Yes, ma'am.
Gentlemen, to share, I might be a little short.
And this is, you know, from previous discussions that we table and so forth, the office at hand, bringing in a new phone system versus our old outdated phone system. We don't currently have support for, you have to call out third party help, all these different things. So this would be, now, it does require that we have upgraded internet when you go to this phone system as well, which we, we need badly anyway. But that's only split to it is that we do need that internet upgrade, the fiber, you know, advanced managed router, copper line. I think that's what they're putting in at your building, right, Mr. Tiggy? Wasn't fiber, come to find out, but it's managed copper. And, um, I'll say this, at the History Center, Mr. John is probably contested, that when the county goes down, which is probably once every couple of weeks at least, Mr. John Jefferson is still running, he's on copper, but it's a managed dedicated line. That's expensive, but it's a dedicated line. And the same in Deweyville. You have AT&amp;T service down there now, when the courthouse here goes down, it's still running. This old phone line system that comes in here is not helping.
What I did, excuse me, is, uh, at the top of the green sheet here, I went through all of the, uh, wind streams here. And there were three specific locations that we really wanted to, uh, kinda look at, the sheriff and the courthouse together. Right now, y'all got a ten meg fiber and one, two, three DSL. So the DSLs or, um, sheriff services, you could be shitting that bandwidth with up to eleven people. The TMA is not bad, but it's not enough bandwidth to run a courthouse and a sheriff's department together. So what we're recommending is to bump the, uh, bump it up to a hundred fifty meg. So we're fixing to put some bandwidth in the building. Right now, y'all got a total of thirty-seven hundred dollars a month that you, y'all are paying for the courthouse and the sheriff's department between phone lines, internet, uh, DSL, everything, you know, put together. We can turn around and for nine hundred sixty dollars a month, we can put in a hundred and fifty, five hundred fifty dedicated fiber internet. And then the phone sets would be nine hundred and ninety dollars. So basically, for nineteen hundred dollars a month, AT&amp;T can put in a hundred and fifty meg with forty-five new phones behind it. And right now, y'all got thirty-seven hundred dollars a month invested in the courthouse. I went back through, so we got a few of them, and they give me some money to play with elsewhere. Uh, the tax office and the county clerk, they, they are reachable with one internet pipe. So right now, today, you've got eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in the phone service, and you've got bonded copper internet, so you're on three meg. You've got two C ones bonded on three meg. So with the, uh, the two bills that I found, the, uh, tax office and the county clerk, uh, wind streams, you've got eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars right now on a three meg internet. AT&amp;T can put you in a fifty meg internet for eight ninety, and we feel like you got about twenty phones there. So with the fifty meg, uh, excuse me, five ninety, not eight ninety, five ninety. Uh, so the, um, tax office is at eight sixty-nine right now, AT&amp;T's coming in at five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, nine. So it will take a hundred dollars of the savings at the sheriff's department and put it to the county, to the tax office. And y'all will have a fifty meg internet instead of three, and you have new phones. Now, the, uh, AG extension to JP three, those are two buildings that Shannon can reach together on one circuit, and we're proposing a twenty meg there. Right now, y'all got four hundred and fifty dollars a month going into that, and that's not your internet. I don't know where your internet is, is built, at the, uh, JP three and the AG extension.
It, it's all mixed up in the different offices, I think it goes to, uh, there's also emergency management in that same building, but not two buildings, it's all one building, several offices in that same building. So you have emergency management, or that's what we renamed it after what's playing last, um...
That's two hundred forty, that's two hundred and three dollars that goes up to the four hundred fifty.
A lot of these can be combined.
Item number, in the bottom of the page, I took all the miscellaneous, and emergency management, which is item number four, gives two hundred and three dollars a month. Then if I move that to the AG and the JP at four fifty-one, then your ticket's basically paid for a five hundred twenty-three dollar twenty meg circuit, and you only have seven phones. So five, six, six seventy-five, and you've got four, five, six, basically six fifty, so that's a wash. So at the top of the, of the, uh, spreadsheet, because you've got so much going into the sheriff and the, uh, county, the courthouse, I figure we have to five thousand dollars worth of charges that can be displaced with AT&amp;T circuit, new phone equipment, and your ticket's gonna come in at thirty-six, sixty-two. So I, I believe you got about fifteen hundred dollars a month savings in the AT&amp;T, and you have a hundred and fifty meg, a fifty meg at the tax office, and another twenty meg dedicated at the, uh, JP Emergency AG section. I think really and truly you've got the money to do it. They install on these, uh, phones, uh, everything is self-install now. You don't really necessarily pay, uh, you can pay AT&amp;T to come in here and install it all, but the phones ship pre-programmed, they plug into the same, uh, computer, the same thing that your computer plugs into, so there are a bunch of little computers now. You unplug your computer, you plug in the phone, you plug back in the computer, and then we port your dial tone in, in. So it's real simple. The only thing I think maybe we might need some help with is the fax machine. Uh, if we have a, uh, a computer close to the fax machine, then the little analog adapter, uh, you could just unplug it, plug it to the computer, and then run a wire to the fax machine. Um, if we wanna tone it out for taxes in the wall, you gotta go into the equipment room and tone it out, and then cross-connect it to the little ATA. So there is a little bit of work that we might need to get a phone vendor, Shannon, uh, help or, or several, uh, phone vendors that might would help us come in and, uh, wire the fax machines, tone them out, and cross-connect them, is what would have to be done to the fax. But there's a big promo... But there's a big promo on the little, the little forty-two phone. It's a, it's a twelve line set. So you can use that little phone for, uh, if you've got two phone lines on there, if you've got two or three C dial keys on there, uh, call card, call transfer, whatever you want your buttons to be used for. But this little phone, it's got a, you pay for it, but, uh, three months later, you get all but one penny. So there's a one penny promo that's gonna save the county like ten thousand dollars in phone equipment that we can, we get to, uh, make an agreement that we want to do it, then they're asking us to sign it by the end of the month to be it, to, so that we get the one penny promo. Now, there's some bigger phones, like the answering positions and stuff like that. We might have to invest and buy a phone here, there, and yonder. But, uh, the little one penny phones, I'd stack up on them. And then if somebody wants another one here, there, yonder, uh, you know, a department head or something, then you might be able to buy a hundred and fifty dollar phone. But, uh, these little one penny phones, they're, they're run the, they're run the whole shop for you. So I estimated that we needed two answering positions at the courthouse and the sheriff, two at the county, uh, tax office and the clerk, and one at JP three. So I've got five phones, uh, for the, uh, five of the bigger phones included, and the reason why we're off on that is Deweyville has got one phone in there. So the five bigger, the six big phones, they wind up costing you twenty-two hundred dollars for the answering positions. That's all that costs the county in equipment. You pay ten thousand dollars, ten six four, uh, ten thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And then two months later, you get ten thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars back. So all you, all you basically pay is the seventy-six cents.
Who does manage on this?
They come in with warranties on them. Everybody's got a, uh, a one-year warranty on all of it. So if the internet's working, then your phone should be working. And if you need some help with the portal, you do a lot of the things that, you know, if, if I've got line two on my desk and I want line three, then you go into the portal and you put line three at my desk, you know, if everything's in the little computer. As far as, uh, repair coming out here, uh, if we've got a phone, that, that, if the internet's working, everything works behind the internet. So if the internet's working, then we should have phones. If we, uh, wind up with one phone in the building that's not working, then they'll ship it out with replacement. Uh, there, there's some troubleshooting, white glove troubleshooting that we want to make sure because that, the, uh, computer is hooked into a port at the switch. You know, everyone, all the wires in the computers all go to one port. So we would test the port and, uh, get Shannon to help us out, do a little troubleshoot, and if we find everything's a phone, then we're not a problem.
If the internet's down, we lose everything.
Internet's down, we lose everything. Now, there's where we could start doing some backseating and some backup.
How, how dependable is internet?
There's, um, and again, John, I don't, I can't front with anything else, but it gone by Mr. John in your office, it's a ninety-nine percent of the time, and this actually, AT&T, um, the contract that they have with Windstream is ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So they're, they're basically guaranteeing that you're gonna be, uh, almost one hundred percent of the time, unless you have no hurricane maybe or something like that. Um, and when it does go down, given when it does go down, AT&T is gonna have Windstream credit back any time that we've lost without internet phone. But we do need some kind of backup phone in a few of the offices that may be old click dial phones. Um, you're gonna have that.
And our phones, yeah, we might wind up, you know, the thing about it with a county or a city, uh, you own all your own toll. The typical business cannot jump up and say, I'm gonna string all across the street because, uh, the, the city and the government is not gonna let you just jump up and climb the toll and run it across the street. Well, y'all are on the toll, so you pretty much do what you want to as far as, um, for example, the tax office. It's got a fifty meg and you've got a hundred and fifty meg at the courthouse. What would it be to crisscross those two and let them be our backup? So if I lose the circuit at the, uh, courthouse, it'll automatically slump over to the, uh, circuit that's hot coming from the, uh, tax assessor. So some of that might get, uh, wiring these buildings together to pull in some backup.
At the end of the day, we have a lot better system with AT&T and a savings of about three thousand dollars a month in bills.
Uh.
Roughly, it's.
Roughly, uh, let's pull that down to about two thousand and yes, sir, I think you've got. You're gonna have, right now, you're on ten mags with the little miscellaneous, uh, DSLs out there, sheriff DSLs. We're gonna put it on a hundred and fifty meg. If you're smoking on a hundred and fifty meg, same will be even quick. So ain't no, ain't gonna be no lag time at the desktop anymore. Talking about going home, uh, you can't run from these phones, you know. If you have internet at the house, I can unplug my phone, bring it to the house, plug it in, and take all my phone calls just like I'm sitting at my desk.
And you can add, add to your cell phone and get a phone on the phone while they're calling your cell phone. Yeah.
But you go on vacation and you bring your phone in your suitcase with you, within, uh, you, for you back to work while you're on vacation.
And I'm, and I'm sure everybody in the world has had these same concerns about the IP hosted internet phone. But this is where every major corporation has gone in America. This is what their guaranteeing of the service, right? I mean, everybody in Houston, per se, is basically hosted IP that we're asking us to go with today.
With such a deep pocket of them, ah, the phone system, that the cabinet and all the clicking and all the dial tone is there, your voicemail's there, all the little pieces are buried up in the cabinet, which might on, on something that's, that can hold forty or fifty phones, uh, to be able to buy the cabinet and all the phones and get it all quote in-house phone system, you probably always say for looking at forty or fifty thousand dollars. And then you have to pay your dial tone from AT&T. So now, instead of the dial tone coming from AT&T, they poured it all into the office at hand. And the office at hand for your phone service, your features, unlimited long distance. Uh, I can be here in this building, and if I have somebody that wants to talk to Deweyville, hold on just a minute, let me transfer you to Deweyville office. Uh, if I want a three-digit dial to Deweyville, or I want a three-digit dial to anybody that's on here, you'll be able to transfer, uh, have three-digit dial, and if you want to page somebody in Deweyville, you page them from your home. So I mean, six and a tie, everything together, and at one time, cities and school districts that had so much in the same phone exchange, the little, the, the only common ground that they had was the central office. Because all these different fiber ribs out there, all these, uh, uh, wiring is all going to different locations. And to tie it all together, you have to have a system here, here, all over the city. And now it's just basically one common, uh, central office, uh, product. But your central office is actually, I think, Dallas. They got three major ones in the United States, too.
And then where again does Windstream fit in this?
Windstream is still your local lack. They are the phone company for this area. Not that Windstream cannot go into an AT&T area and quote sell their products, or AT&T come into a Windstream area and sell their products. I mean, that goes on all day. Uh, so AT&T has got a agreement, a contract with Windstream, that Windstream's gonna keep y'all's service going. If not, AT&T's got an SLA, a service level agreement of ninety-nine point nine percent, that that internet's gonna be up. So if we have a repair problem, then AT&T's gonna check out the network and then send it to, uh, Windstream to check out the local circuits.
Well, hadn't that been a lot of our problems, the Windstream?
Yeah, um, just for example, the other day, if the hurricane and our internet went down, almost, uh, we can have for those four or five days that we're waiting on Windstream to respond and give us some kind of, uh, is it, is it a fiber line cut somewhere? What's going on? It ends up being a cable cut on the top of the sheriff's department, but we cannot get a response from them. And with this, I'm gonna call her and AT&T is gonna push Windstream to, to give us some information, get it fixed, whatever seems to be done. But for four days, I just kept submitting tickets, calling, to not get any answer. Is it us? Is it them? Do I need to start climbing buildings? What? Because they have the capability to go into their switch and tell me if they have the right connection to us or not, and that's all I needed to know. I asked IT guy to give you permission to be able to see if we have connection to that address the other day, and that's something they can't do. So it's on us to figure it out.
It's classic circuit. If your DSL is down, unfortunately, you're gonna go in the line of whenever I can get a, a tech out there, we're gonna get you out there. And it doesn't matter if it's residential business now. When you got the sheriff involved, then there's the central lines, but they do have to be noted in the system to be a central line. But your T ones and your managed products, they take on a whole atmos, a whole different atmosphere. Every hour, you can escalate your ticket on a managed product. And if you're, if you wind up down in a couple, a few hours, then AT&T and Windstream is all over it because it's a managed dedicated circuit that carries a, uh, a service level agreement. And if the service is not there, AT&T's gonna refund you your money. So they don't really like to do that very often. They don't want to come pay for a repair problem. They're gonna, they're gonna hang with it, uh, uh, Windstream to get it fixed, and it's a managed product. Every hour, you escalate it.
Okay, I need to ask a question here. You said the promo was gonna be in at the end of the month?
On that one penny promo.
Okay. And so if we decide to go with your program today, did I hear Shannon say that this program don't work without putting the fiber into the courthouse? Is that right?
Well, we can do it all in others, even because of maybe of this particular program, if that, we don't have to have it right here today. You can put it at the tax office, you can put it at different offices, Gary, Mr. Bill's office down there. And it's going together, um, just about a flexible button online at the day. Don't have to be done down the stairs like we used to, that we can't get help for. Windstream, every time that switch down there, they don't have anybody that knows how to work on things anymore.
I don't think you've got enough bandwidth, I don't think you've got enough bandwidth on your internet today to put the bill on these phones.
Not enough to do it now. You gotta have an upgrade on your internet first. But we have internet coming in at your office, we have the internet in Deweyville, and we have the internet at Mr. Bill's. We go ahead and give this a try.
So when you was in my office the other day, I asked you for true figures, not hidden figures. So is this some figures that you got me today?
That's why I went back and pulled everything you had at Windstream. So I've got an apples to apples.
The graph that I worked on yesterday, and my numbers may have been a little bit different first, but you know, those little ID or whatever, I just went straight off the bills and what I've seen from the files then.
And you, and the AT&T proposal, you just put the two thousand in phones, civic, good national internet piece.
Not for as a fiber, uh, but for as a phones, we could because we could connect through his junction or, or, or where, where are we running from with our major, uh, phone system?
You're not connected to a hub like you do now.
It's, uh, actually the hub has been down.
What, what's it gonna take to get everybody in the courthouse that's just in every office?
Internet first for this courthouse, internet. Like I said, for Deweyville, they, they're ready to go right now. They have a twenty meg fiber, they'll be up very soon.
Fifty meg.
Fifty meg fiber. They have enough bandwidth, they can do it today. Um, here, no, you, you're, we gotta figure out how to get either fiber or dedicated copper line into. Now, when I was digging back in the field, it showed that we have a ten meg fiber coming into the courthouse. And both they're only providing like maybe six meg or something like that at this point. So I've gotta do some digging on that, but it's still, um, um.
Where your firewall will be full. It might be ten meg at the router, but when you put your switch and your firewall behind it, it has a tendency to eat a little bit of the bandwidth. So not to say that a ten meg circuit is easy because it's not. If you pay for a dedicated circuit, you're paying six and a half a month for ten meg. But unfortunately, when you've got a minimum of forty-five phones behind it and forty-five computers behind it, that ten meg's starting losing bandwidth quick. But we're gonna, we're gonna bump you up to a hundred and fifty meg.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna, we know we're gonna support all of that, plus here, you've got the net gathering issue, and that's back, uh, back office, that's back there. Everybody's poking into that thing or something like that, so it's eating up bandwidth.
So what's it gonna take to fix the courthouse?
We gotta figure out a place that y'all wanna put new equipment. If the dollar switches are two thousand, we gotta fix those things there, upgrade or, I don't know if you're gonna rebuild the courthouse, I don't know, nobody knows that.
You don't have to move that anymore, it's been there for years.
Is it okay to put that down there? Put new equipment down there? I'm fine with that.
I'm, 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 I've, I've been thinking about this, and you know, where, where would we put this? So is there, is there any way we could build walls around this one unit and put air conditioning and that kind of stuff down there in that basement?
I think so. I think, um, and, and there's a room, now for some reason, um, in Gasser, they moved everything out of the courthouse, I don't know if it's Boston area, but they moved it to a building down the street. And they have everything in this little room now that has this little, it's like a portable AC with a big heat vent going up to the ceiling that's constantly monitoring the humidity and so forth and circulating for air there. So we could do something like that.
Well, we just don't have that building down the street. That's, that's our problem.
I mean, like, uh, figuring out a way to put, there are little rooms down there. Maybe you already have a little room, you know?
As far as AT&T and Windstream, they would put that fiber cabinet right there, right down there. And then you just jumper up, uh, the equipment.
How you gonna get chalked?
Oh, it's the equipment, but, I mean, been there for a hundred years.
A little much building up for her.
These are actually probably what it could be.
Yeah, I wouldn't believe it.
One should be more, one should come over to D mark, and there's a bunch of, uh, tickets to turn in and move everything on.
Yeah, well, we, we would actually build a, um, some, some block, something down there. To make it, uh, perfectly, uh, climate controlled. There'll be a door, I guess. So how much would fiber cost us of running in this courthouse?
They're gonna run it for us, right?
Yeah, and AT&T now, like I said, you don't have to move your D mark. That was in the, from the basement. AT&T's been, and, and Windstream's been looking up to it for years. They will put a fiber cabinet right there, and all you're gonna do is have the switch from the router or a cable, they're gonna provide the router, install it no charge. AT&T's not gonna be anything to install.
Okay, two years down the road, we gonna, we gonna take it out of there and we gonna move it somewhere else. How much that gonna cost?
Engineering ticket to move your D mark to another location. I know what AT&T does, um, it's a five hundred dollar deposit to get them out there, to kind of look at all of it, and they say, what do we want to do? And then they will, it's at the customer's expense to reroute your D mark. But that's something that would be, uh, above.
How much you talking about? Three, four thousand dollars? Five thousand dollars?
How much you talking about? Three, four thousand dollars? Five thousand dollars?
Well, you know, to move that telco D mark, whoa, I, uh, I wouldn't wanna put a price tag on it because I don't know. I don't know what all there. I mean.
You're, you're, to me, you're thinking about thousands.
Yeah. The D mark.
I'd say, I'd say you could get done for under five thousand.
Under five thousand?
Under, that is, that is off the top of my head. I think that's a lot of money to put into something. I just, I don't, I would say that it would, I would hate to stand in front of y'all and tell y'all that I think it would be over five thousand. You know, that's a, that starts talking about big money. But, uh, I feel like, yeah, you could probably get your D mark. They would, uh, come in there and engineering would look at it and figure out what all it takes to get it to wherever you wanna put it.
Let me put in right quick that, I, you know, I think there's a few with the D mark and all this, the fiber that you're gonna install downstairs, we just wanna pull that wire out and put it across. How much does that cost? Not moving the D mark and all that, just moving the fiber.
To the business office, it's a new board. I mean, all I'm gonna do is move it to the new D mark, but until across the street, you already have a D mark there.
Well, I'm just, uh, just for example, it might be a building outside that's a recent or a building, new building. But to move the fiber downstairs, they would basically run a new fiber to that building? Or would they pull it out?
No, they're going to the street. Cause that's what, that's what your new D mark is. It'll be a new cable from the street, wherever you're terminating it at. And then the business office is a new board to move all your dial calls and everything to the new D mark. So it, it would be AT&amp;T engineer coming out.
Probably five grand.
Especially if it be more than five grand.
I don't know, you know, a lot of that, when you start trying by digging a concrete, do it, trench and all that kinda stuff, some people will, uh, get out there and rent, rent, rent a ditch, rip and trench it out. Some people's gonna contract it out. It'd just be three times the price tag.
Do we even wanna ditch someone in here? I don't know. I was praying now, but I think they're probably coming off a pole. It is coming off a pole. That's the one we just repaired going on top of the sheriff's office.
So you don't have a problem with putting it in the basement?
Absolutely not. No, that's where your dial call is. I mean, that's where everything in this courthouse is served is in that basement, and that's your main telco D mark. So, I mean, it's just, that's, that's where it's been forever. And as far as AT&amp;T, Windstream, anybody else, then it'll stay there forever. But if you want to move it, that would be y'all's expense to move it, and it's not gonna be, I don't think it'd be an absorbent amount of money, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna change, you know?
Is it AC and heated down?
You mentioned that.
Yes, uh.
There is a vent, yeah.
Not that, not that controlled.
Yeah, see, there's a little vent.
We need a actual room, not that whole interior.
Sorry. You have a water line going right on top of your equipment with the sprinkler?
I treat them asking all the questions. I know, I know all that.
It's got a sprinkler system right on top of this equipment, and you know these computers don't work well with water spraying on them. All of those switches that run everything for this courthouse and sheriff department are pretty little switches. The water inundation, the rain was six inches on the floor, so we're having new flows up and things like that. I'm just, I'm just asking to protect the equipment that y'all have on purpose. And maybe reroute the water line, you know, get some things off the floor, humidity control, you know, if you have a lot of humidity in the air, these things aren't sort of how functional. You're gonna sort of have a storm center and things like that. And some of those switches we have right now, they're constantly throwing out red lights and stuff. Could it be humid? I don't know, but it's definitely not good for your equipment. So that's what I'm saying, before you invest too much in all that, you know, more new equipment. Uh, Mr. Beal, how much equipment would you say don't evolve over there? You know, that's, they might at all come to something new off. And if you had to buy that, now a lot of that's from AT&amp;T. But if you had, you know, if it's shorted out or something, and they'd offer places out there a year or something, I don't know, probably gonna be three. But you're the climate control. You have a real AT&amp;T in there and stuff like that.
You don't have to do that to install the fiber and the, and the new phone system. You don't have to move your D mark to do that. That's the same one that's been there forever. They'll mount a, uh, and you got that board in there. I looked at it. Uh, they would mount a little fiber cabinet about the size of a notebook, and then send a router out, and then the internet would plug in, plug into the hundred and fifty meg router, then your switches is what sends the, uh, the wiring to the building.
Now, and we can see, yeah, but we can, we can see the pool. We can look at it, um, isolated cabinets possibly. I don't know if we would Twitter all the equipment that they, uh, they, they like to install in the wall.
You can extend your D mark. I mean, the D mark, uh, the, um, the quote, D mark's not gonna be moved, but when you, if you want, if you don't.
It's a job of our end way.
If you don't want your router that moves, you can pick your router, switches and all that. You can move all of that without moving your telco D mark. But when you move D mark, there's a way you're gonna get any hearing from the local.
Is it up there or not?
You can move your switches and stuff. What about, again, the power that's moving all
They designate the equipment room?
Move it, just the equipment, move your D mark.
Like all secured, yeah. What, what if we took it and went to the old hospital? Was it, is that, is that any, made a real secure place up there?
Um.
How would you beat it back?
Uh, they, they have fiber running that way now. I think we could possibly connect into the fiber we have running down the pole now. But it gives, give me the, um, you know, we had that, uh, fiber screw up here the other day, so it may cost another five grand, maybe it would be just.
Could, could, could we vote on the contract before this promo went over, went expires?
Your contracts are signed.
They're already signed.
Because, uh, we, we got a fifty meg contract signed when we put in Deweyville, the internet in Deweyville. So if it's a fifty meg, you're, um, you're on a ninety-three percent discount because there's a special promo on the fifty meg data only. But, uh, everything other than a fifty meg will be wrote off of this same contract because we've already got the promo. Now, there's a place on three sixty-three that is outside of the promo area. Where'd you call that?
That's, uh, JP one.
JP one office that, we have to look at that individually because it's too loud to get the promo. But as far as, uh, contracts, everything's signed.
And that's all that's in, right?
The office that's in contract is signed because we, we're already looking at it at the JP, uh, the new office at Wiregate, the FM three sixty-three, and Deweyville. All that was already kind of been pre-approved. You get everything on, on.
And I wanna say, when we, uh, first committed off of that hand, it probably was Mr. Tickle off the same hook. So if once you have a office that's in contract done up, I guess technically it's already done. But we have, we have to put in an order, and that's the holdup, and that's where, where here today this comes. If you get that promotion, you gotta fill it by that thirty first. You gotta place it forward.
I need a place in the water for you.
And to place it in order, you gotta go through and all that.
I appreciate the verbal, that, that we're, that we wanna move far off it. Uh, uh, everything's in place as far as, uh, signatures and all that, the, uh, the, there'd rather be a twenty meg, a two fifty mags or a gig, this one right here will take care of anything on your internet, other than the fifty meg. The only reason why we got two different contracts is that, that special promo.
So if we're making a motion, what would be the wording?
To approve AT&amp;T phone service, wasn't that the story? And the phone service is there to install, uh.
Approve installation of internet in office that needs equipment for rights from AT&amp;T.
And what office is it we wanna bid it for?
Okay. All right. What y'all wanna do?
Do something. I'm tired.
On this chart, it's gonna save money.
Do something.
Right, it's gonna save money. Something, yeah, upgrade.
I need to, I am confused.
Okay, cool.
We got the money to pay for this one.
I think do it.
And nice new equipment, new internet.
I mean, I think it's gonna save probably twenty-five thousand a year if you're gonna phone this up.
You take care of the cage building internet too, uh, you take care of the cage building internet too, also?
The cage building.
Huh?
We don't pay for the, for the cage building.
I know.
Because that's theirs.
I don't even know where the cage building is. Where is that? In Birdville.
Oh, is it the one across the street?
Okay.
Anything with three stairs, you don't have to, or anything.
That makes sense to me.
Now, we'll bring up, I put it on my chart there, some of the information, but I think that needs to be.
Cage building too?
County building. If we're gonna use it.
Well, I'm just saying.
The, um, Powell Hotel, um, they have a phone line that's being built here, right? Yeah, okay, and, uh.
Yes, it is.
If we were gonna go to, maybe we can leave that one as is, but if we did wanna upgrade there, they would need internet there as well. Obviously, they use that office at hand.
And we did, we did a phone line over there just when they have food, so people call and ask, like, do orders or whatever. I mean, that's what they do, what traditionally call that.
Yeah, you may be able to just leave that service alone.
So what we do with the cage building, the same thing?
Okay.
I mean.
The cage building, we need.
We actually do, we, we do it for a longer service than, than the Powell Hotel.
Well, you might have to pay for it. I mean, only if you stepped out and put your pay for it.
So you just wanna phone it, huh?
Is that what you're saying?
Well, they, they run internet also. I mean, I don't know who's got it.
Why wouldn't you want to, why wouldn't you want?
It's a county building.
And now they're gonna be doing food share.
I mean, my building went down, our building, under a county phone in county area.
Yeah, I agree.
But it's everywhere. So again, with the Powell Hotel, do you wanna go ahead and put internet in there so that?
Yeah.
Uh, look, I'm just one. Yeah.
Well, i- if, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do it, let's do it.
That's right.
I mean, if you're gonna do one building, you might as well do all the county buildings.
And I will say, I mean, it may take a little extra step, but we're not gonna put a drop just for her. We're gonna actually get here what we have here, county courthouse. And if I gotta dig a trench or something, I'll put some over it.
I'm okay with that, as long as you share with.
I might even be able to get.
It may cost you some upfront money to get the cable over there.
Why ain't the cable hanging in them poles up there?
Right, but it comes around to the courthouse, and then once we have it at the courthouse here, we're gonna have to start branching it out if we want it to come here first, right? If I put that one fifty meg here, then you could also probably get into the tax office and not have to put a drop there and save another seven hundred a month.
And if we do that, then we shorten the burn, uh, backup.
That's right.
If we.
If we need that backup.
If we have a cable between this building and the tax office, then if I've got a, if I've got a fiber cable between the two, if I lose internet, if it's main, if the main cable, then.
She's down too.
I can pull it from the tax office and vice versa. If the tax office loses it, I can pull my internet across that same, same pipe from this building.
Yeah, we need separate.
Well, that's home, that's hanging behind on that alleyway back there, right? That's where it's coming from, right?
Uh, it all comes from the, uh, yeah, in that hole right there, they have a drop right now, yeah.
And if it's too far out, then it's not feasible to run a, a fiber two miles down the road.
At least break down our cheaper propane here.
Yeah.
I mean, what happens?
Cars leaving, right? Okay, we'll go.
Yeah, but he, he ought to be able to jump off me, right? I mean.
It depends, that's what I'm saying. It depends on how far you are if it's.
Half a mile, half a mile.
Well, then you're on the pole. You ought to be able to run it like that.
Oh, I don't think we own the poles up there. I'm in the pole zone.
I'll say we're in the.
Own something else, the pole, huh, Bill?
But, no.
Own something else, Bill, the pole, huh?
Old poles in, in Windstream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but you're closer to cage building, maybe closer to that central office up there than it is here.
That's right.
We do have a secret wireless on some little buildings that'll probably, um, that's what we talked about.
We can figure it out, right? Just say you can figure it out.
I think you can. And I, and I promise you all what your money for the deal, I mean, I'm gonna put y'all in the deep end.
A couple more points, maybe. All these little, um, Wi-Fi boxes we're having handout around here, just so they can work, those things that turns out to be in about thirty-five dollars per device per. If you got good internet here, you can get rid of a bunch of those and save a thousand and two thousand dollars a month just from those.
Let's do something.
All right.
Hey, we can get, right now, y'all are running off AT&amp;T. So we're gonna go through the food share. We're gonna hook up the food share and all that stuff.
Cage building, food share, we got two buildings up there to get at.
Yeah, you're at the A, Ken's at the A, extension buildings?
No, that's, uh, Birdville. We're gonna have a couple buildings up there.
Oh, okay.
Cage building.
Three sixty-three.
Food share.
Yeah, sixty-three, I'd say sixty.
That's six.
No, that's, uh, JP one. It'll be good if it's, if it's, um, good on that JP two.
Yeah.
That's long distance, that computer, that's, uh, liquid.
For me?
Oh, liquid.
I don't remember what they call that.
But, where?
Uh, JP one.
Oh, that's, uh, um, no, Fayetteville.
Fayetteville.
Gonna be AT&amp;T.
F A W.
Fayetteville.
Okay.
Now, look, we're talking about, uh, we're gonna.
Yeah.
So.
That's a more clever AT&amp;T.
That was the new.
Remember, AT&amp;T gonna make a paper, pay for the downtown.
That's the new.
Yeah.
I got. Or the guy.
That's the, that's the Kirby deal.
Right. That's not possibly going.
Oh, okay.
That's probably.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make that motion, but I'm gonna let you do the wording. So the clerk can, can document what, what we're saying. So you will, uh, explain what, what we're doing here.
Approve installation of AT&amp;T dedicated internet services with AT&amp;T office that and phone equipment for all county offices.
Okay. And buildings.
And buildings.
Okay. All right. That motion been made?
I said.
Motion been made and second, uh, I'm not gonna reword that by Mr., by me, uh, Judge Weeks and been second by Mr. Fuller. Any more discussion? Not all.
Bear in mind now, this all stands on Windstream.
No, they have a, they've got a contract.
They got a contract.
If they will force them, or they're gonna reimburse us for downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which we don't get now.
Yeah.
Every customer that's got a managed product from AT&amp;T, it's got a service level agreement, and if you start to lose service, then AT&amp;T owes you three days of service on that thing. I've never seen a service go down every day, uh, a DSL maybe, because it just doesn't take priority in repair. But it does step you up when you've got managed product.
Okay, we're taking the vote, uh.
Thank you.
All in favor? Five vote.
Thank you. Did it reach that time?
We got a long way to go. Discussion, number seven, this is discussion of appropriate approved Texas County and District Retirement System, elected rate of eight point four oh five, and that's, uh, what we've been going with for, ever since I've been here. So we just need to renew that.
So be.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. Bomby, uh, second by Mr. White, that we leave, uh, the, uh, District Retirement System elected rate for eight point four five. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five vote. Number eight, discussion of appropriate approved first, uh, contract renewal for the statewide. Number eight, discussion, appropriate approved first, uh, contract renewal for the statewide auto- automated victim notification system. And that's just a renewal contract, uh, with, uh, Newton County.
I make that motion.
I second again.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby, second by Mr. White, that we approve the first, uh, contract renewal statewide automated, automated, uh, victim notification purposes. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number nine, uh, discussion, appropriate approved the rules and guidelines governing the management of COVID-nineteen outbreak. And that's just setting up some guidelines in which, uh, all offices need to go by. This is, this same stuff that's, uh, been put out, but, uh, we just need to approve that.
I make that motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Fuller, that we approve the rules and guidelines for governing and management of the COVID-nineteen outbreak. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number ten, discussion, appropriate extend the COVID-nineteen disaster declaration until October thirteenth, twenty-twenty. And this is just ongoing until, uh, probably the, the state lifts theirs, and theirs is ongoing also.
I make the motion? That we extend the COVID-nineteen disaster declaration.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson, that we extend to the COVID-nineteen disaster declarations until October thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Okay, any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number eleven, discuss, uh, discuss, inappropriate, if appropriate, extend the hurricane law or death correction, uh, until October thirteenth also.
Second. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Bomby, that we extend the hurricane, uh, law or declaration till October thirteenth. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number twelve is, uh, a deleted item that is same as number two. Um, number thirteen, discussion, appropriate approve interlocal cooperation act, uh, contract between the University of Texas Medical Branch at, at Galveston and Newton County for health care services. And that, uh, is a yearly contract that, that we pay a certain amount on certain things. So, it's just a renewal. Here, motion.
I make that motion. And second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby, second by Mr. Thompson, that we, uh, approve the interlocal cooperation, cooperated, uh, act con- contract between the University of Texas Medical Center at Galveston and Newton County Health Services. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number fourteen, uh, discuss, uh, appropriate approve new renewal of IBM hardware or software maintenance, Ms. Lewis?
This is not any renewal for our, I mean, the server downstairs. I don't think it's the exact cost from the work before, but it, it, I don't think it went up anything when I looked at it here, but it. Now, what we add is the very, at the very bottom, the HD redemption for forty-seven eighty-four, forty-seven dollars eighty-four cents. That shows we could keep our, uh, hard drive when they come in there and do a break for security reasons. And, uh, yeah, they get it.
I make that motion. That's second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby and second by Mr. White, to approve the renewal of IBM hardware and software maintenance agreement. Any more discussion?
We're gonna loopholes in that, dude. We're gonna loophole in that, dude.
They take care of it.
Okay.
They come in here and do a break and I'll.
Okay.
All in favor? Five oh. Alright, number fifteen, discussion, appropriate approve text dock agreement between TDSR, RS, and Newton County, Mr. Bean?
Okay, y'all should have a copy of that, uh, and, uh, we've worked out some questions there. Judge and I went down there with Don Smith, President Engineer, and got those, and it does have leaners cover field, uh, in that agreement, uh, they are, want their monitoring firm to continue to monitor since they're paying the bill, we don't have to run it to monitor. And then, as fortunately, it's, um, indemnification for the county clause added in there, we got that added. They agreed to that, and so, uh, it should be good to go. She's looked at it and, uh, given her approval on that.
So, that's all leaners and all limbs hanging and all of that, right?
Uh, back up to the county right away.
Right.
Yes. Yes, they agreed to that.
But they're not gonna get out of the riders and cut it off?
They're not gonna get out of the riders, no.
They're gonna cut it off, where things over the road? I make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Bomby and second by Mr. Thompson, that we approve the agreement between, uh, TDRS and Newton County. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh. Number sixteen, discuss, inappropriate authorize TDRS SAT and agree, uh, compensation for Newton County.
I didn't get that into Angie's hometown, that was what court we kind of put together for our, uh, rent agreement, lease agreement, whatever you want to call it, for our SAT, for our temporary debris reduction, uh, just for basis there. And then, the, the, the hardest part is going to be to determine what to pay, uh, the landlord for that. Uh, cause, uh, Tony Furth with FEMA Region Six, he handles all the debris for them. And, uh, his guidance was, uh, they're not gonna pay, uh, per yard, it's, uh, uh, per month or, or, or agreement for a, a period of time. And whatever we come up with, he said, what they're gonna pay is what is reasonable to rent or lease a piece of property for that period of time. And that was about, uh, uh, as much as I could get out of it, told him he wasn't helping as much, but still, uh, that was the terms that, uh, he said they're gonna look at. What is reasonable. And what he said was, what would be reasonable to you to rent your piece of property for that period of time? So. You know, that, that's, that's not a lot.
Pretty vague, ain't it?
Yeah, pretty vague. Well, it's, you know, it, it gives them a, a big loophole.
So, they're gonna.
But again, you know, the, the problem here is, we still have not reached our threshold. And so, if we don't reach that thirty-eight million dollars, then the county's gonna be out all of this, whatever we, whatever y'all determine is, uh, you know, the, the price you want to rent that, that piece of property for. I thought we know that.
That's all we had, mirror.
We have not received anything in writing. No confirmation. We have received, there, there's some confusion, category B, which is our emergency protective measures. And then I got an email last night that was disheartening on that, because now FEMA's cutting that off on the twenty-seventh, the day of the hurricane. Twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh is all they're allowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's paperwork we've been doing the way it's done.
Well, not yet.
Maybe not.
Maybe not. If we reach thirty-eight million, you know, uh, we can fall back and pick that up.
Do we know what that number is, Olin? Or do you know what that number is?
Uh, we're getting text messages from, from, uh, some elected officials saying we've made it, but, uh, nothing that, it, it hasn't come through, so.
It has not been declared through the federal.
Sure.
We haven't asked for it until they can constitute those numbers, the state will not ask for it. And when that does happen, then they'll ask for federal.
Well, I knew we didn't have that on paper yet.
No, no. Yeah, everybody's turned in their number, so to speak, uh, TDN's verifying a lot of those numbers, same thing on our houses, you know, we're, we're nowhere close to the eight-hundred houses we need for individual assistance.
Yeah.
But, you know, uh, everybody's fairly confident with the amount of money that the, uh, uh, utility companies spent, uh, you know, that, that we're gonna make it. Joey David said they were spending about a million and a half a day through just the Newton electric. And so, you can imagine what energy spent.
Plus part of twenty or so million right there, right?
Yeah, yeah. And plus the, the, uh, uh, sheltering that, that went on, uh, they had, uh, ten thousand people, I think it was, in shelters, and they were all in motel rooms for the most part.
Right, three hundred million dollars.
Yeah, and that, that was a, a, a pretty big expense, uh, there. But a big part of them, I think they've still got about five thousand, uh, Louisiana people that's in shelters, so.
On the debris side, we're different from, from Tex- from the, uh, right away, text dock right away, right?
Yes.
So, we don't have anything to do with that. So, we're, so we only have to worry about our county stockpile, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's all their contract with, uh, the text dock contract with their contractor. What, what's happening is, we're getting to use their contractor and they're gonna pay for it, but we still, under TCQ guidelines, we have to have our own spot and we have to take care of our own debris.
And they know exactly what they're gonna pay for that spot, they won't let us know. So, anything over and above what they're gonna pay, we're gonna pay for ourselves a hundred percent.
Yeah. Well, I, I say that, uh, there might be some argument there about what is reasonable, I'm, you know, I'm not sure whether we have any ground to stand on or on, on that. And, and what you're gonna get into is, is what we determine is reasonable, what we think FEMA is gonna say is reasonable, or you're gonna get a landlord that's gonna agree to that.
So, do we need to fall back on our, instead of making this, making our enemies more than what we already have, by going out there and offering them some lame price per acre or whatever it is? Do we need to follow back to our county dump sites?
Well, the, the problem is, whenever you read your, your TCQ burning guidelines, we got to be three hundred feet from our property lab. And so, if you, you take a, a circle and draw it, I looked at it, you gotta have about at least twenty acres.
Yeah.
If you got a twenty acre square, you can get by with that.
Yeah, we don't have.
If you don't have twenty acres, then it, it, it's not a big enough piece of property, uh, TCQ guidelines.
And this, and this, uh, we don't have time to cure that problem today. But I think in the future, I think we need to create our own spots, about three located in the middle of our county.
Yeah.
You know, one for precinct, uh, three and two, and then one in Bills, and then one in Duvall. And, and we won't never have to run into this problem, uh, you know, down the road.
But this is what we've got, right, man?
But how are we gonna? How would I offer somebody what we've already been owed?
My suggestion would be, and, and this is just briefly off the top of my head, you can throw it out the window, whatever you wanna do. Uh, to me, a reasonable price would be two hundred and fifty dollars an acre. And a minimum of twenty acres and a maximum of forty. And so, you're looking between, uh, five to eight thousand dollars. And, and the way I'm looking at this is, uh.
Off field rent.
Is that what that is?
That's what that is? Per rock.
Well, I didn't hear you, Ted, what you said?
That's a per rock, that's basically a per rock, right? Every sixteen feet, two hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars.
And, and what that does is, uh, if we don't get the declaration, the, the county's not going out with big sums that they've gotta pay. We're still, we're gonna get, you know, seventy-five percent of that back, which, I mean, if we got three or four spots that, say, eight thousand, that, that's not what, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars that the county would be out.
But per month, is it, yeah?
If that's the way y'all wanna set it, per month? I, I'm not sure we would get by with per month, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, whether that's reasonable per month. It is to me.
Well, what they call reason, if, if we meet that seventy-five percent, twenty-five.
Right.
Then their reasonable amount may be.
Less.
Heavy to the, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, they, they already know what they're gonna pay.
Yes.
They know what they're gonna allow. They just tell us what they're gonna allow, then we can work with it. But we really don't know where to start.
Olin said a while ago, when he called a man, that, that he didn't give you very much information. I heard him ask the, that same, identical question. Anything, you give no answer, so, uh.
His answer was, what's reasonable to you?
Yeah.
Well, to me, it's by the yard. That's where everybody, everybody, uh.
By the ton?
Well, no, by, just do it by the cubic yard, I mean, that's how they're, that's how they're bid it, is by the cubic yard. Okay, so, why not? Why, why would you wanna change their, their way of thinking?
Well.
They already own the cubic yard.
This is by timeframe though, just how long you leave that on just property.
I know, but you could do a cubic yard price and be done with it.
Uh, no.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but he, he says no cubic yard.
I don't.
Just in their own minds, they're gonna, how many cubic yards are gonna be on that location for the price of cubic yard?
Well.
If they don't give you cubic yard out, just say just, he leased it for a certain amount.
On our, our permit with TCQ, we've got to have any cubic yards we're gonna borrow.
That's right.
But.
Well, they'd be recorded, uh, by the monitor station.
Yes. We'll know exactly how much is on there, but on our application, we have, before we ever get any, uh, anything hauled, we still gotta put a number down.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna exceed the two of the hundred and fifty that the guy come back with. I'm gonna want to tell you that.
And, oh, no, he says two hundred thousand. I, I don't know if it's gonna make it.
Oh, yeah. I wonder how much have they hauled already?
I, I don't know, on Texas state right away.
A bunch.
Problem is, Judge and I went out and we looked at the monitoring and everything, those trucks they're running, uh, they're, they're thirty, forty percent. They may have eighty-five cubic yards marked on that truck, and whenever he, he marks it, that monitor looks in it, he said it's forty percent full, that was thirty-four yards. So, they're making a lot of runs, but not much in the truck.
Have y'all been out looking at the pile?
Mm-hmm.
What's the pile with that?
It wasn't very big.
Wasn't.
That was last week.
Yeah.
And that was one truck, uh.
Got a circle in there.
So, uh, we, we, we were just, what our question was, you know, this, you got this eighty-six cubic yard truck. So, how much are you actually hauling? So, they pulled a ticket, and, uh, it, you only haul, what, thirty-six cubic yards?
Yeah, forty percent was what marked, that's their job, look in the truck and determine how much of that truck is, is actually full.
Not saying they have trucks like that now, uh, uh.
Hundred.
Some of them might be a hundred percent, I don't know.
No.
Uh, we're just talking about that one particular truck.
There's a vegetated in one of those trucks. There's too much air space.
Right. Okay, y'all. Okay, so.
Fair offer, dude.
So, is.
No, no.
So, text dock has give that over to their contractor.
Their contractor.
And they bid it, and they bid it for a number. So, uh, cubic price per square or cubic price is the way that they bid it at, okay? To pick it up on side road.
Yes.
To pick it up and take it out there, dispose of it, burn it, whatever they got, it's a cubic yard, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't know what that number is. Really, we don't know what that is.
Uh, it's.
We don't.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know what it is.
No.
We don't know what this is, but there, there's a lot of.
Is that text dock contractor paying? Are they paying for this site?
Yes.
Or, or they're paying, or we having to pay for it?
That's not.
For the text dock, oh, they're paying for it.
We can use their site, but we have to get a separate group.
I understand, I understand. But, but is the contractor gonna pay for our site too, or we're gonna have to pay for it?
We're, we're gonna have to pay for it.
So, he is not, so that number is, he's still getting this high num, or whatever this number is, and we're having to furnish our debris sites. and we're having to furnish our debris sites. He's still getting a per cubic-
And that, I don't know, that's between him and Tex-Doc.
Well, I know, but you know, he's done bid it. He's done got the contract to pick up the debris. You don't make no care, care of his county or, or Tex-Doc.
It might make a, a difference with Tex-Doc, since he's not having to dispose of it. We're having to dispose of it. We're having to burn it, we're having to do something else with it. Most of each contracts, there, there's a set price for picking it up.
Right.
Every time they move it, they get another two and a half, three, four dollars a yard to move it, and, and to the final disposal. And so that part of his contract, he's not gonna get.
So you're saying it's probably our part, it's about three dollars a cubic yard?
Uh, I, I don't know. Uh, I'd have to go back and look at our contract to see what it was. In the contract, it spells out picking it up and carrying it within ten miles. If it goes over ten miles, then the price keeps going.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what we're gonna accept the deal with the landowner, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go and tell you, the two thousand dollar deal ain't working.
Well, the, the two dollars a yard ain't worth it, Ted.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're saying you got a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand yards up there.
Yeah.
At two dollars, uh, dollars a yard, you're looking at two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's not reasonable. It won't fly.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we gotta make a deal to make a deal.
We gotta get it, it's-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I, I dreamed that number out of the sky.
When you have nothing to go by.
When everybody else was dreaming in the same way I was dreaming, you know? We already knew two thousand wouldn't work.
That's the reason I said, you know, a, a minimum of twenty acres.
Yeah.
Because we, we gotta burn it, and, and that's gonna meet the requirements of P C U there. So that, that would be by-
Well, would twenty thousand dollars, twenty acres be reasonable? Do you want twenty thousand dollars for twenty acres, would that be reasonable?
I wouldn't think so, not when they're paying two, through Tex-Doc.
Yeah. And they should've never cut that deal. There's two people that made that deal.
Yeah.
And it burned it for everybody. Okay? I mean, we gotta take care of our folks too.
We gotta get a site approved first.
We got sites approved.
We don't.
We just ain't got no mon- we just ain't figured how much we're gonna pay them.
Well, we don't have a site approved, yet.
Oh, I do, I got two.
Nope. We gotta go back and redo those. Long as we have, that's happened Friday.
Okay.
We've got sites approved for the debris, but we don't have sites approved for burn. We gotta go back, redo one page, the second page, and, and, uh, up to, uh, Portia this morning.
Yeah.
And we're gonna wait till after our meeting with Forest Service Wednesday and go by their recommendations, whether it's open burning, whether it's-
Well, there, there's one of them will be approved, but they've already burnt out there, the state's already burned before, so I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think it'll be a problem on this. We just gotta do our paperwork.
Yeah.
And, and we need to do our paperwork on the historical permission, right? Get that. And I don't think fires will be a problem down there, uh, the problem is going to be the money. It's down to agree to a rock. Yes.
And all field workers or owners are not used to working teeth.
Well, look, there's no sense where I'm gonna complete my math here.
I wanna be fair about it. I don't want taxidermists saying an outrageous price, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat him out of that money either.
So you got a dollar amount in your, your mind? I, I mean, you say you wanna be fair about it.
Yeah, I, I-
Wha- what is fair?
I, I'm starting to go and just spend less than ten thousand dollars. We just go, we're gonna spend another five thousand cleaning it up after everything's through with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or more?
Or more. And that's the reason I think they need to be limited. I think those sites need to be limited. I don't think we need eight or ten sites all over the county for us having to go behind them and clean up. I just got a bad feeling about this, I just really do.
Well, I'm just gonna go-
Not unless we can make them sign a piece of paper saying we're gonna give you X amount of dollars, and then you're gonna be responsible to clean it up. Our, our handle though remains that. Now, I feel good about the Forest Service, I don't think you'll have a minute's trouble with phone service.
Now, we just need to agree on what we're gonna do, air curtain or, or open.
I mean, if I was gonna have anybody that I really would-
And, and that's all Billy wants to talk about, because, you know, I, I ordered one of the, uh, uh, air curtain barks, but he's saying that it's slow, uh, takes more men, more manpower, whereas if the open burning is quicker, uh, I'm just not sure it's gonna clean it up as well.
Well, I tell you, I, I can only talk for about the ATV park. There was two chunks about that left, long left over, when they got the burning before.
It's gonna be trashed by them.
That was all the debris from the-
If we use the air curtain.
Yeah, it wasn't, no, all they did, they opened burning. They didn't, they didn't use anything except open burning. And there was two pieces of that.
You can run out here and look at Thomas at, at Brick Barris, 'cause he's already burned his at Brick Barris.
Yeah.
Uh, here from, uh, East End Town.
Yeah.
Well, I thought that used mail, I didn't know this.
No, it's the city, the town's there.
The, the city of Houston, all theirs out here at Brick.
Yeah, the town's there.
They burned. Didn't say, I just said it on fire.
Fire, yeah. Open.
What they could've said are open burn.
Right. And that's what the state did out there last time, when they done all the bridge to clean the property.
The, the only problem out here at H and H, I'd say he's too close to the woods. You know, that's, that's not a big enough piece of property to do that. So I, I don't know what he's gonna do, but that's not our problem, that's his, that's the contractor's problem.
Yeah.
Well, what I know most happened is me to agree on the price with one guy, and Ted agreed on the price with another guy, and, and Ted say he did twice what I paid mine.
I paid his worth.
That's the reason Mr. Green was right here, uh, and, and it's through the court, what y'all said.
Well, you wanna do it per acre, per month?
Well, anything is rented by the month. You don't give it, I mean, that, I've never been where you just rent up something and then that's what the price was for eight or six or whatever month. So I think when you talk about, uh, per month, and I guess you're already sold on twenty acres, so-
Well, I mean, we have to have twenty-
No, I was gonna say, we must, we, we had, and we have to come up with a twenty acre price, and then per month. I've never rented anything that you just paid one price for, till you use it however long, in the real world.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if it was gonna be gone. I just wanna know when it was gonna be gone, and then when it's gonna be removed.
Yeah.
It'll be a couple months.
Whenever we do our permit with P C U, uh, you have to set a time limit on the end of it. Uh, I know with some Thomas, he did three months. Uh, he's gotta be through with it, everything by December itself.
And it, and that's probably realistic for him, he'd probably do that. I'm just telling you, there's a lot of debris out there, and I can't figure debris. I'm not, I don't know what a pile of debris, how many cubic yards is in a pile of debris. If I knew that, then I could tell you how much I got. And I'm just telling you that I've got a bunch. I got every grade I've got debris on.
You're gonna have more probably than anybody, from what I've seen.
Everywhere. Do we have to make this map? Do we have to come up with this map?
Uh, trying to think, how soon, uh, well?
Soon as we get this contract to him, to take it.
We'll just have to, if we, if, if we all fail at it, then we'll have to come back to the table again.
P C U is waiting until our meeting Wednesday with the Forest Service for us to decide which way, on our application, we have to put either open or air curtain. And so it's just, they're gonna wait till we have that meeting. We're not in a big rush, 'cause that's what I told you, we're not even hauling any of our debris in that site. And so we'll, we'll need something to put on that application, we'll need something. These sites already designated, you know, you have to have that location whenever you make application to them.
Well, I mean, we still gotta go down every road and, and mark where the piles are.
I'm not gonna mark where the piles are. If I've got debris on forty-one oh two, I'm gonna say there's debris on forty-one oh two.
Marked him out, I heard you, he just wanted maps. That's what he told me, he didn't want to miss the county grounds.
Well, that's gonna take me a while to find these things out, man.
I would mark it from memory and give it back to me, and I'll scan it, and he may look to, he will have a map.
Well, the problem I see with identifying each piece of debris is that you say, well, this is a piece of debris. Well, the contractor may, in this contract, may decide it's not a piece of debris. Let's say you missed that leaning tree.
That's what I'm saying.
So I would, I would say identify the, the county roads, highlight the county roads and be done with it, i- in my opinion. Now, if they want something different, then they come back with us, and we'll all meet and say, hey, this ain't gonna fly. But I, I don't-
On my end, there's not that land available, it's out of the flood, stop. And, uh-
And has to be out of your, your spectrum, that's pretty simple.
That's what I'm telling them, but, yeah.
Well, we're taking that, well, you got two too, see?
I don't think, I'm just being, I'm just curious, you know?
Play ball. He wants too much money, doesn't he? Yeah.
It work?
Yeah, he's, he don't-
I'll buy more property.
And if, if he's gonna mess it up, he gonna pay for it.
Unreal, it's unreal. But I don't want him to say seven dollars and then, oh, oh-
We got some timber, timber company, he's got some man then right in it.
Yeah.
That piece of property that I bought for the flood cooldown, a hundred and sixty-five acres. And, uh, but it's all timber, you just, yeah.
Y'all got that sad look on your face, what was y'all whispering about?
Man, it's, I was flubbing, so I'm applying.
You already know.
That's the money?
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call mine and ask him what he'll charge for two months.
He can't, he can't do it in two months. Can't do it in two-
Three months, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say three months.
Yeah. I wouldn't dare put myself on the spot for, for two months.
And then, then he can tell me, but-
'Cause remember, you're not doing this, you're not dictating this. Remember, this whole big equation, you have nothing to say about it.
No, no, but that landowner has a lot to say.
No, I know, but I'm just saying you don't.
I'm just gonna ask him what he, what he'll charge for three months, twenty acres.
I mean, we-
What I know most happened, he'll give me a price, and you go talk to yours, and, and he gets flash with one I just talked. I'm gonna tell him, if someone else gets more, everybody ought to get the same.
Y'all get the clothes from these guys, or, or, I mean, we're just, I mean, I know we're gonna leave quicker than Baxter Valley. Why don't y'all talk to these guys and get the clothes, and then y'all get back together and, and come to a happy meeting? I mean, we just know we need to do this.
They don't have to meet him for me, it's going to have to meet him for the landlord.
No, I know.
You know?
I mean, what I'm saying is, if y'all choose a side, you know, if you got one that's twenty thousand, one fifteen thousand, one thirty thousand, let's go meet in the middle and everybody get paid what they need to get paid. You know, 'cause like-
Well, I agree with that, everybody ought to get the same.
I know, and that way you can do it, because FEMA's gonna look at how we come about the number.
Well, they could tell it is.
How we came about the number. So if y'all just start, starting numbers out there, they're gonna go, why is that, why is that fair and reasonable? But it's not, it's like going to buy things with equipment and stuff, and you get several quotes to see what's the best for your product. Something.
Well, we come up with a number, apparently our number wasn't any good.
It was half a lot, I don't know what's so secret about it. All they say, tell what they got, what they're gonna pay, you'll have to pay it different.
You'll never know what that is.
You'll never know what that is.
I am.
Yeah, you won't never know what that is.
It is not, it can't go by, to start, 'cause we can't do that, you already said, that's not a good way to go.
What, whatever number we come up with, we're gonna have to have some justification for, for that number, is what Leah's talking about. Well, that is okay, yeah, that's all the landowner's gonna say. If, if, if that's all they're gonna accept, then that, that, that's what we've gotta go by. And we have to produce that, and hopefully they will accept that or not. That's, uh, the problem you, you run into here with reasonable price.
In the real world, when you're in a building, it's about a dollar, a dollar fifty a square foot, in the real world. If you go to Beaumont, then it's five dollars a square foot.
Love, love square acres and twenty acres, love square-
No, I'm, I'm just trying to give you an idea.
They got, I know, it's just, they got-
Give you ideas.
They, they got business as far as we're gonna-
We come up with two dollars a cubic yard, and they don't like that number.
That, that's not our problem.
Well, I, I, I felt that dollar a cubic yard would've been really-
They haven't, in that, in that agreement- It still makes a lot of sense. Uh, Tex-Doc, there is no number of, of debris sites mentioned, there is none of that. The contractor, their contractor is responsible for their temporary debris reduction site. He only got two in Newton County, that the judge, that he notified the judge, the ATV park and H and H out here on, on Jamestown Road. There is nothing in Fleetwood, there's nothing in the south end of the county. He has two spots. So everything he picks up from Newton South, he either has to come back this direction, or he's going Orange County.
And how, and I don't, is it very much debris down there on that end where he'll have to open up a site?
On the south end?
Yeah. No, I'm talking about Orange, I ain't talking about Orange, he, he'll go to Orange.
Yeah, my, uh, what did the man estimate, two hundred, twenty thousand tons?
Two hundred thousand cubic yards is what D R C estimated.
Yeah, that's what they estimated, I am.
On county property.
Yeah, on county property.
Well, I'm just telling you, I got it. I got all the debris. You ain't got no debris.
Oh, you're wrong there. You, you hadn't seen-
I bet I got a hundred and fifty, I bet I got a hundred and fifty cubic yards.
You got a hundred and fifty, that's more than two hundred thousand, man.
That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's right.
Tell you that, I don't even have, I will, I will, by today, I'll have it out on my phone, I'll be able to make the time, I'll be able to get it.
Have you rode south end?
Hadn't been on any of that road.
I just know that from Bondwear.
To it, Bondwear.
Let's, let's move on, let's get away. We're just, I'm, I'm gonna call and find out what the guy's gonna charge, I'll get the ticket, see. Jen, are you gonna have a site?
I don't have a site yet, no.
So I'll just, and we'll-
It may, it may, it may have to come this way.
I, I think it's, I think it's just political, the state will say-
Everything, everything in all of this is in the flood plain.
Well, Red, uh, Phillip, Red's gonna be out here, Phillip, Phillip's gonna have Red.
He may not.
No, well, yeah, he is too. Yeah, he's already, uh-
They already, it's already been approved, right?
It's been approved, but Red's been up to prove the price.
Yeah, he did.
What was the price?
With him. Well, he hadn't done it with me. Don't get us confused. You got Tex-Doc material and you got county material. Red has cut a deal with him for Tex-Doc, and Brick has cut a deal with him.
Nope, nope, he's not on the list, you're not listening, it's two sites.
I know, I'm just telling him that Red and that guy has cut a deal on a price.
But he's not on other sites?
No, he's not, yes, but he will be.
Unless he may be a county site, but he's not on Tex-Doc's site.
No, yeah.
There's only two sites.
Well, wait a minute, the Red's already cut a deal.
With the Tex-Doc. Which we'll never know what it is.
But he's not using him, Ted, he's not using Red.
I know that, but he's cut a deal with it.
It, it doesn't matter if I've cut a deal, if he's not using him, he's not getting any of it.
Yeah.
Would y'all like to table that till Thursday?
Yes, that's tabled, and I'll, I'll get that guy and see what-
Make that motion.
But again, I don't, I don't wanna-
I made that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Mr. Thompson, second by Mr. Fuller, that we table item number sixteen. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, number seventeen, discussed, we're appropriately approved lease agreement with T D R S sites. All right, number seventeen, discuss appropriate approved lease agreement with TDRS sites. So we don't need to do that, we're tabling another one, so we'll skip that one. We'll go straight into the, uh, budget workshop, Miss Leah. Give out.
We're about to do something very quick.
We, we table it if you want to.
Okay, I put budget workshop on here and just let y'all know that, uh, September eighth, I filed a proposal, y'all all got a copy of it. Uh... If y'all have any questions, changes, whatever, let us know, if you come across anything that we need to talk about. And then, because we're on the twenty second, it's next Tuesday, is when we will have a final budget workshop for any changes that need to be made in the document. We have to do that next Tuesday. We're already on the calendar. So if y'all come across anything that we need to talk about, be sure and let us know before then, so that we can have the number in the room and bring it up Tuesday at the workshop.
Okay. Y'all got any questions about the workshop? Okay, uh, who's gonna present, payment of bills, Shay?
Okay, um, general fund is four hundred and thirty thousand, seven fifty-eight, twenty-four. The DAH state trust is two thousand, ninety-nine, seventy-five. The road and bridge general is twenty-five thousand, oh, seventy-seven, forty-five. Road and bridge precinct one is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two sixty-four, thirty. Road and bridge precinct two, nineteen thousand, three eleven, seventy-four. Road and bridge precinct three, twenty-five thousand, sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Road and bridge precinct four, twenty-one thousand, five twenty-seven, ninety-four. The VHS grant, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three, oh, eight. Commissioner special precinct one, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four twelve, thirteen. Precinct, Commissioner special precinct two, sixty-nine thousand, three seventy-eight, sixty. Commissioner pre, special precinct three, twenty-seven thousand, five ninety-eight, seventy-two. Commissioner special precinct four, nine thousand, six twenty-eight, eighty-four. Dedicated road precinct one, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Record preservation, seventeen hundred, fifty-seven, sixty-eight. Solid waste disposal, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and four cents. Voter registration, fifty-six hundred, thirty-six, oh, seven. Newton County library, twelve thousand, four oh nine, ninety. Historical operating, thirty-two hundred, seventy-nine, seventy-four. Hazard mitigation, two hundred and eleven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The grant, two million, five hundred and five, two thirty-one. Technology fund, three hundred and eleven, three hundred dollars and eleven cents. Out of this, approximately two point seven million is gonna be grants and we're gonna be getting reimbursed. Any questions? The total, oh, three million, six hundred, forty-eight dollars, nine four hundred, ninety-four, thirty-two, so.
Any, any questions? Hear a motion?
So, pay the bill.
Hear a second?
Second.
Motion being made by Mr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Farmby, to pay the bill, uh, all in favor? Five oh. Okay, there's no executive session, so do I hear a motion with adjourned?
Come in. Second.
Motion is made and second with adjourned, and it's, uh, twelve forty-three. All in favor? Okay.